All right, it's ten o'clock. Share if you guys is open.
Yes, sir.
Let's have a word prayer. Everybody bow with us, please. Most gracious heavenly Father, dear Lord, thank you for this day. Lord, thank you for the blessings of life that keep us all on this day, dear Lord. Lord, myself, I take for granted, dear Lord, and I'm sorry for that, but I'm still thankful to God. Dear Lord, just thank you for each and every one here in this room. I just ask a special blessing upon them and their families this season. Dear Lord, we just ask you to help us remember the true meaning of the season, dear Lord, the birth of our Savior, dear Lord, the greatest gift of all. Dear Lord, we just ask you to go with us at this time as we conduct this meeting. Dear Lord, that we conduct it in a godly manner, that we give it a pleasing end to you, dear God. We just ask you to forgive us of our many sins, for us these things in Jesus' precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Prove budget force and no budget. Motion to approve. Motion for Randy.
Sorry.
Second for CJ, all in favor? Motion, carry. Discuss amending personnel policy. This is for vacation leave, December 31st of each year. Hours in excess of 80 hours would be transferred to sick leave rather than dropping off and losing hours as in apparent personnel policy. Y'all remember Tommy Sloan come in and ask about it here a while back. What this is, we all understand that we can roll 80 hours over. But anything over 80, they lose. Those over 80 would go toward their sick time. And then the sick time, if it accumulates over the years enough, it would go toward retirement. I think Terry's checked on it and done the same. It's all legal and we can make them up. Second for Chad, second for Sam. Okay, that we will...
We're gonna do it just like we've got written now?
Yes, anything over 80 rolls over to sick time instead of losing it.
And it won't be in conference of the county?
No.
No, it won't be in the way yet.
Dollar wise, it's worth learning what I was thinking of.
Right.
And that's why I approved.
Can you use the tablet?
Do you get a second?
Yeah.
Yes, Chad made the motion, Sam second, all in favor? Motion, carry. Authorize road manager entering into a contract with Kim Pro for the roadside winter spray. Motion.
Second.
Motion for CJ, second for Randy, all in favor? Motion, carry.
I'm gonna get you to sign these if you will, because we've got a lot of stuff to design, basically. We'll do it as we can.
Okay, yeah, I will.
Yeah, but you don't have a copy of that.
Yes, sir.
I sent it to you.
I got it. It's in the stack here.
Discuss quotes for the purchase of a three-point hitch leaf and debris blower.
Okay, I've got these. Here we go. We have two quotes, one receiving Greenville Turf and Tractor. For one Buffalo turbine, three-point hitch, leaf and debris blower, for $6,570, six, five, seven, zero. That's with Greenville Turf and Tractor. The second one is from... I guess Better Chicken Houses.
Better Chicken House.
Better Chicken Houses. I was mentioning that's the name of it. It's called Better Chicken Houses. Okay. And...
Are they both the same model?
That's what I'm look- I looked, yes. But, well, I'm looking at the item number. It's a BT-CPT0. Now, this is a sideline, and this is as opposed to the Buffalo turbine. It doesn't give any model number or anything. Ah, I'm not seeing. It's for $5,755. But we need to let our lovely attorney go through.
It's a soft one.
It's Buffalo, it's Buffalo turbine.
Oh, I didn't see that up there. Okay, Buffalo turbine. I feel more comfortable if he looks. Well, you can look at it, but I want him to look at it too.
Motion to approve. Model.
This, this goes with this.
Same with that.
This is, this is the one. This is the second one. This is the second one. Just look back here and see.
Yeah, this one, this one model number.
There you go. BT-CPT0, that's the model number. I put it set out.
You know, look at the thing. Probably other than sign. Model, yeah. That's what I wanted to picture.
Yeah, I mean, I know you was looking at One Pacific buying, but...
Yeah, that Buffalo turbine, it's supposed to be a vessel, but they're saying, saying model number, yeah. Same, okay, every time. Same thing about whatever. Next week. And others are big. Don't know. Like $800 fifty-five.
No, we all, the cost of it. I'm thinking, okay.
If there's anything we need to get, we'll be paid for by the...
We'll get them up, yeah. Yeah, I told the man today that y'all accept it. And he's got that one in stock, and other guys will be like 12 weeks, but it seems $800 a hire.
Make a motion, take the loan.
Yeah.
Second. Motion for CJ, second for Randy, protect the low bid, better chicken houses at $57.55?
$57.55.
Okay. All in favor? Motion, carry. Discuss quotes on culverts and lifting lugs for road department.
Yes, sir. Adco, Python Supply Company at... And GNO Supply.
Yeah, that's one of those.
Okay, so GNO Supply, it's $6,868.80. Then they charge $70 for the lifting lugs and $95 for the freight, bring it to a total of $7,033.80. Seven zero three three point eight oh. And then Adco, the total is, well, I can break it down first. The lift, uh, the culvert says $7,400...
Sixty-six dollars.
You got it, sixty-six.
Uh, for the freight, $105.56, and for the lifting lugs, $160. Total is $7,731.65.
That sounds bad, yeah.
Roll the total there, you want $60?
I have the motion too.
I'm gonna say Adco.
Sixty-six for fifty-one. Twelve gauge, about thirty feet. Got it.
Twelve gauge to thirty feet.
We'll save me none of the reflection, but I'm sure something we need there.
I know, I've got, I've got that one, but I don't think it's actually...
I got me one for... Culvert got it bottom, it's five foot tight. That's a sixty-six. Maybe.
Sam made a motion.
All right.
I'll second. Second for CJ.
Take GNO, is that right?
Yes, GNO, $7,033.80. Sam made a motion, CJ second, all in favor? Motion, carry. Discuss appointing new board president and vice president effective January 3rd, 2022. Make a motion to appoint CJ Bryant.
President.
Wait, did you say, I heard you said, oh, you said CJ, okay.
CJ Bryant will be appointed as president.
Steve Etterzahn first, or how you did it?
I think we can just appoint you, and we're saying he's gonna be appointed effective January, what'd you say, January 3rd?
Well, January 3rd.
Okay.
He'll be, he'll be appointed, effective January 3rd.
I know you appoint a board president like for four years and then before your term. That's why I said that.
Okay, well, he'll start, he'll be effective January 3rd, so he, he'll resign at the end of this meeting, yes. At the W P, yes.
No.
No, he resigned, you're resigned off of that one.
Effective December 31st.
January 3rd?
Well, it's January 3rd, because we gotta have you until he takes effect January 3rd.
Yeah.
The first quarter.
That's right.
So you're stuck with January 3rd.
Probably January 3rd, because you don't want to be on 31st, January 3rd without...
You're right, I got you. All right, there's a motion made by Randy for CJ Bryant as president. I need a second.
I got a second.
Chad, second, all in favor? Motion, carry.
I make a motion, we appoint Sam Taylor as vice president. I'll second that.
CJ, there. All right, Chad made a motion. Sam Taylor as vice president, CJ second. All in favor? Motion, carry.
Randy, Chad, and CJ.
Yep, Randy, Chad, Chad, and CJ. Approve of the four-year road plan, including inspection report and certification report. I make a motion, we all... Motion for CJ.
Second.
Second for Randy, all in favor? Motion, carry.
Okay, we have places where everybody can sign, I believe, and start with Steve. You'll sign there, I think. And then we'll just go right, way off. Yes.
You have a pen up there?
Mm-hmm. Sign my name.
I need to mark my...
I can do that. No, I'll do that. And, and I, yes, I'll pick that. All right, good luck, guys. Do you have any empty copies of these?
Uh, let me look at this.
If not, I'm just gonna make copies for you, please. What are you gonna do? I need five.
You're not telling me.
Thirty, I need to, you have two more?
Yep.
Okay. Sign your name, fill this out, or put your district's name or name. District's name, district name, district name, and... District and name, and then off you left the rest. This is what you're signing off, too, is on the board, your road plan, but it's for your district. Does that make sense? You're doing this for your district, and I'm watching y'all, because I've got a number on it. Do you sign?
No, that's just like a...
Appoint ten years flyers as purchased effective January 3rd, 2022. And approve thousand-dollar bond as set by statute.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion for Randy, second for Chad, all in favor? Motion, carry. Authorize broker board to advertise for Ken's depositors as required by statute.
This is just for preparing the ad together, the paper, accepting obviations from depositors from other banks, and then we'll make the decision later.
Motion to approve. Motion for Randy. Second. Second for Chad, all in favor? Motion, carry. Approve the longevity paying cruise for Scotty Whiggin in that road department. I make a motion. Motion for CJ, second for Sam, all in favor? Motion, carry. You agree?
Yes, sir.
Discuss bids previously taken under advisement for handling supplies for the road department. This is on the...
On the rock, yeah.
Rock, almost, almost cold, it's almost...
I make a motion, approve the low bid, take the second bid as often.
Everybody had a chance to look at it, too. Motion for CJ.
Second.
Second for Chad, all in favor? Motion, carry.
I got it. Spreadsheet, I can come in.
Oh, that's good, thank you. Oh, that's good.
Now, Hoover didn't bid on the 89M, so you can't take an offer on the 89M.
Okay. Oh, yes. Thank you.
Discuss bids for inmate food service.
Here you have it.
To eat in some of it.
Hey, we gonna do the asphalt stuff on the...
Oh, is this... Well, I think you were talking about taking all the bids, so that was your meant.
Yep.
CJ wanted to take all the low bids, for, for everything.
What about five seal? Y'all gonna do five seal, take one, got five seal.
All low bid.
Low bid, and then take...
The other is up.
Sure going on the...
Do we need to go through each one?
What about laying the asphalt? Y'all gonna take bids on the laying? Yeah, on the low bid, and then it comes off, okay. I know y'all said something about not, not hiring anybody to lay it. But we can take the bid and equally, if we don't, if we wanna do it ourselves, we ain't gotta use them.
Yeah, you can do it yourself.
Yeah, that's what the discussion was, is whether we wanted them to do it or our meeting to do it.
Right.
But we can still take the bid and still...
Yeah, I think, uh, WG, I think my laying was...
Why would that be if we're...
Yeah, I just thought y'all would...
We can use them, we don't have them, we can't use them.
Discuss the bids for inmate food service. Terry, you got some?
I laid down right there with proof of publication.
Does it say it?
Yeah, and this was the electronic one came in, and that was the still bid.
I always get stuff from you, yes.
Yeah.
I don't have my heavy game tonight.
Y'all complete investigation on the missing one.
Been missing in action for at least...
Missing one night.
Five years now. I expect the sheriff to charge somebody with that.
Like yours the last one, was it?
Was that...
A knife, right?
It was on this candle over here, it's candle moved, and that candle moved. Where did move the candle?
I don't know.
It must've been that.
It was not me, don't look at me.
I didn't, I didn't know that. It was a nice case knife, dude. One just gave you...
We have a...
Something at...
Eighteen month.
I did have a nice knife, not bad. Okay, so this one's from Tiger.
This has no tip.
Generations.
Every now and then you...
Proof of love.
No. I have one. Just kind of first of all. I've been practicing. I've been practicing. Yeah, that's very cool, thank you.
I mean, it's not in here. It's like, you know what I'm saying? They, they've made a proposal, but they don't tell you what it's gonna cost. I mean, there's a menu and pricing.
Can we have to compare it to the existing?
Yeah, there's supposed to be a chart in there. A range of meals, so much, for each range.
Me, you have two options, you have two options, either two hot meals and one cold lunch with Tiger staff Monday through Friday. Jail staff overseas kitchen workers on weekends, or option two, two hot meals, one cold lunch with Tiger staff seven days a week. What have we been doing?
Been doing five of, uh, let's flat, let's flat seven, but they actually provide a way there cooking five, I think, in their right here.
Okay, under, so we've been doing option one, so under option one, the pricing proposal is for an inmate count of zero to 25, $3.07 per meal. For an inmate count of 26 to 50, it's $2.15 per meal. For an inmate count of 51 to 65, a dollar ninety-five per meal. Inmate count of 66 through 75, it's a dollar seventy-five per meal. For an inmate count of 76 to 100, it's hundreds, I'm sorry, a dollar sixty-seven per meal. And for greater than 101 inmates, it's a dollar fifty-three per meal. That's under the option that we've been operating under.
And we currently have time?
Yes.
Yes, we have time.
And that's...
Is this just a one-year deal?
Yeah, I think it says in there that you can, uh, uh, extend it, in the specification.
Okay, so then the summit...
We probably...
You can renew it, you can renew it.
I would probably go with an average of 60 to 65, what, was that a...
Yeah, see, there's a...
Fifty-one to sixty-five.
Fifty-one to sixty-five, and 66 to 75.
I would go with at least 50 more to 65.
So that's a dollar...
We're averaging about all year.
That's a dollar ninety-five per meal. This, the bid submitted by Summit of 51 to 65 is $2.10 per meal. So it's cheaper to stay with Tiger, uh, based on the 51 to 65. The 66 to 75 is Summit is a dollar seventy-nine per meal, Tiger's a dollar seventy-five per meal. So Tiger's still cheaper. It's not until you get to 101-plus inmate count that Summit is cheaper, which is, it's a dollar fifty-one per meal. And Tiger would be a dollar fifty-three per meal, so a two cent difference. Uh, you have 101 inmates.
And our contracts already with Tiger.
According to, uh... I forget the guy's name, but he was Brian Hall's boss, who was at the church conference. And he and I discussed the... Deals not being prepared correctly and really about fit to eat, that if they... Received or won the bid, that they would probably, was probably going to, uh, get rid of the girl that's in the kitchen now. Because I, I think that's been the problem, the little, the little bitty lady that came up from, from Little Rock and met y'all that was real nice. When she, when she went in there and stayed a little while, the inmates said, "Look, it's, we can eat. It's not the best in the world, but, but we can eat this, we can make it." And when she left, and they put the little girl that's in there now back in there, it went right back.
It's all preparation.
So I think it's been a problem more so with how she's having them prepared as much as it was anything, so. His promise to me was that if, if they got the bid back, that they would correct that, so. And that's, this is what I told him.
And he says she's...
They said, "Well, she decided to..."
We'll get that, right?
It'd be a good thing, I think.
Okay. Well, y'all heard the...
I'd love to take a low bid, Tiger, kind of carrying food service.
Motion for Randy to stay with Tiger as low bid. Second. Second for Chad, all in favor? Motion, carry.
Terry, I, I think that there was a little bit of talk, even if Tiger got it back, that maybe once a week or something, they would, they would... Try to cook them a hamburger, and maybe some french fries or something, but then they stopped about, well, if they done that, the inmate had to pay for it. And I don't, I don't know that that, that they'd be legal. I think if it's an inmate...
You gotta pay them.
I, you gotta feed them, so if they don't treat them to a hamburger, they all have to pay for the hamburger.
That's right.
Not the inmate have to say, "Hey, my mother's gone, could you give me..."
Yeah, we'll tell him that.
$2 for a hamburger, so I don't think...
Yeah, he was talking about going through the canteen phone or something like that.
Yeah, and I don't think, I don't like it.
I'm like you, I mean, I already paid for it, I think, then you... Yeah, they didn't need to pay for it.
I think, too.
I agree with you. Yeah, he explained it to me, too, but it was kinda like if they want something extra, they can buy it, you know, like, to the canteen phone.
Yeah, they already buy the stuff.
To the canteen.
Yeah, I don't think...
No, I've heard you.
As long as a meal...
That's right.
To eat that they oughta have to.
Right.
I had a motion for Randy, a second for Chad, all in favor? Motion, carry. Discuss dump truck bids previously taken under advisement. Make a motion, throw them out.
I'll second.
Trucks were too large anyway, weren't they?
Yep.
Reject all bids. Had a motion by Chad, a second for Randy to reject all bids. All in favor?
Can you tell me when this goes into effect on this, uh, time? Does that play the first of the year?
They are...
For Tiger?
No, for the 80...
First rail policy?
No. Starts today, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay. We just need to get a, get amended so Brittany, I have it.
And I guess get it out there, but it, it is official, and it may use, use the real department.
Cause they'll... They gotta use them by next week, is that right?
Yeah.
Next Friday.
So now they don't.
So now they don't.
Yeah, my man probably gonna try and use them a little before they move.
If they could hold it, right?
He did already say.
Send it, please.
She sent it.
Approve of amendments, severance statements, the fees.
Should I go over them already?
Don't get them mixed up, y'all, good question.
No, actually, that's, you, you have two pages, remember? Each one is two pages. You're welcome.
She got it all mixed up. Make sure she understands that much.
Make a motion.
Make most of the proof.
Aye. Motion by Randy, second by CJ, all in favor? Motion carry. Approved inventory deletion of scanner from circuit clerk's office.
Make a motion.
She gonna broke the scanner.
Aye.
Motion by Chad, second by Randy, all in favor? Motion carry. Approved inventory deletion of a fire truck in the fire department donated to the city of New York.
Make a motion.
Go around that, Kirk. Russ truck, it comes, that's far as to one of the big airport trucks.
Normally approved later.
We approved it last time. So we do have to do that with names.
I second, Steve. Who made, who made the motion?
I did.
CJ made motion, Chad, second, all in favor? Motion carry. Approved inventory deletion of Motorola VHF radio for the department, no longer used. Motion by Sam, second by Chad, all in favor? Motion carry. Approved petitions for reduction of assessments from tax office.
These are like you've seen before, um, example, your 2021 tax roll had a certain amount. Um, anytime we have to make changes through the year for reducing them, for example, the. So, the county does not pay their prorated taxes, so that reduction had to be included in this. So that just is an explanation of why we have reductions, and they have to be approved. There's a bunch of those that have to be signed. I don't know if you want to judge that.
It's a little shiny, each other.
You wanna wait later or not? It doesn't matter. I don't mind you waiting on this.
I, I'll wait, so we can carry on.
I'll do it like that. Okay.
Yeah, I think so. You'll be keeping over here.
Make a good proof.
Motion by Randy.
Second.
Second by Sam, all in favor? Motion carry. Approved petitions for the increased assessments from tax office.
That's same thing, except this time we increased.
You gonna make this one up.
Luckily, they're pretty close, but not exact.
Is this all Randy's own?
Yeah, that was.
Randy owned it.
Want to get a motion, Randy?
No.
Now, yours is not in there this time.
Make a motion. Need a motion by Sam. Aye. Second by CJ, all in favor? Motion carry.
You know, if we're ducking it, though.
Gotta get rid of something.
I am. It's what happens when you live like a rich and famous.
Right.
Approved that down. New hire of deputy collector at tax office effective January 30th, 2022. The third, I'm sorry. January 3rd of 2022. What did I say?
Thirty. I don't like that long. It's been hard enough. This is Emily Sanford. She's coming from Free Rivers for the garbage collection side. So she's already familiar with how to find those. She's familiar with AS400. Um, so I think it'll be a smooth transition for the tax side. Maybe a little harder for Turner Marvin, who are selling tax and tidling a car, but at least she'll have one under her belt, it won't be so hard to train for.
Make a move.
She's replacing Tony Mas, and Tony's last day was the first part of December.
Motion by Chad, second by Randy, all in favor? Motion carry. Approved chances for court payment for copying tax rolls and certifying state. We get a detail of this, will you?
Sure. Do you want to give me to show the entire stuff I've done? You want that?
No, I'm not.
We can go over it, thank you.
It's a pretty big book.
It's a pretty big book, if I'm saying it right.
Sorry.
But I've got time.
Motion by Chad, second by Sam, all in favor?
That's why we're expecting you, Daniel.
Approved payroll authorization of part-time employment for Shara Miller as nine-one-one dispatch effective December 20th, 2021. Did I pronounce that correctly, Sheriff?
As good as I can.
Motion approved.
Sam, and a motion by Randy, second by CJ, all in favor? Motion carry. Get that back and give a copy if you're gonna give it to her.
Thank you.
Approved longevity pay increase for Chris Root, the sheriff's department, effective January 1st, 2022.
Make a move.
Motion by Chad.
Second.
Second by Sam, all in favor? Motion carry. Keep it straight now, don't mess up. Approved payroll authorization, part-time to full-time jailer for Alec Lipsy, effective December 20th, 2021.
Someone.
Motion by Randy.
Second.
Second by Chad, all in favor? Motion carry.
Do you need these tasers to work, or they quit?
They, they, please, move that.
You want them or wouldn't?
You're joking.
We're gonna try to bend over the top.
They might work for Randy. I mean, they just. They just want enough just to bite somebody, I think. Approved inventory deletion of two tasers for the sheriff's department.
Make a move.
Motion by Chad. Aye. Second by CJ, all in favor? Motion carry. Yeah.
You ready for this one?
No, I don't think so, yet. Say, it looks like we don't go into executive session before we have to do that. Jimmy, you had something else to?
Just need to, uh, request permission to advertise for a bridge on County Road 81.
I make a motion. I give you permission.
Aye.
So that missing head is UC 73, nine hole.
Nine. What was that? What's the letter? Say it again.
In the hole.
Oh, in the hole, okay. You said that last time, I think, so. Okay.
I still can't remember.
In the hole, yeah, in print states.
Wait, wait, CJ and Randy there?
Who, who?
Seventy.
Seventy-three, print states, nine, post-print state, or in the hole.
I like in the hole.
It threw me off for a time.
Very good. CJ then Randy.
Yeah, CJ made a motion, Randy second, to advertise the bids on a bridge on County Road 81, all in favor? Motion carry.
Might just save it, it's gonna come in cheaper.
Terry, do you have anything else?
Nope.
Kirk?
Nope.
Yeah, I'm gonna announce that and announce this here before.